Good deal. All right. Morning, everybody. February fourteenth, Happy Valentine's Day. Y'all don't forget to either get flowers, candy, or take your significant other out to eat today. Boost the economy of Liberty County. About that. It about nine oh six. February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting Commissioners Court, Liberty County, Texas. And let the record show that Commissioner Karbowski is here, Commissioner Arthur is here, Commissioner Wilson is with us by way of Zoom, and Commissioner Whitmire is going to be absent today. The family funeral to attend this morning. So we do have a quorum established. We have business for the court today. So if we would all rise, Lee, if you would lead us in the pledges, Sheriff, if you'd lead us in a invocation this morning, please.
Please face the American flag. Please face the Texas flag.
Pray, please. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord, I want to thank you for this day, and thanks for the freedom we have to gather together, discuss the workings of the county of Liberty, Lord. I hope you'd be with Judge Knight, the Commissioners, Lord, as they go through this agenda today, Lord. I ask that you give them the wisdom to do the things that that are right, Lord, and, and, Lord, I pray for them. I know a lot of times their decisions are made, they're not popular, and I just want them to know, Lord, that we stand by them and support them in the things that they do. Lord, bless all the elected officials, bless all the employees of Liberty County, bless everyone in this courtroom, Lord. We're thankful for all the blessings that you give us. Please forgive us when we fall short. In your son, Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Sheriff. We don't have any notices or proclamations this morning. So the next item up would be public comment. And we do have some folks here. Ron Blake, I know, I saw you. There you are, Ron. Okay. Rodney Harrison.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have Rodney here, and Tommy Touche. I see there, Tommy. Okay. Ron, if you would, come on up, and as this is not in reference to any agenda item. You have, soon as you get ready and push the go button, I'll give you three minutes. Okay?
Thank you.
And just remember, we can't respond.
I understand. And keeping with the tradition I started some time ago, I'm bringing you flowers again today. These are dead blockers, but they represent, as you all know, many of your own enough to remember, as I do, buddy poppies. These are given away annually throughout the year by the VFW. I'm very proud to be a lifetime member of the VFW auxiliary. I'm also the chaplain and historian of our auxiliary company. I'm here today representing Rodney Harrison, my friend, Tommy Touche is here to support. Talking about veterans issue. The veterans issue is Rodney Harrison is applying for benefits and has hit a brick wall with the Liberty County Veterans Association. Now, he'll explain that in detail. In the meantime, I want to simply say that my two veteran friends, and I have an honorable discharge for a cup of coffee, and we represent about three veterans in Liberty County. This cluster of flowers here, each of you will receive a bunch, represent all the other veterans who are not here today, who are here today in spirit and here today with problems. We all know the problems that veterans are facing today. Twenty-two, twenty-two veterans every day are committed to suicide, obviously not here in Liberty County. Thirty-five is the newest number. When's it going to stop? We can stop it by treating our veterans properly. So that's my, less than three minutes.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Thank you. Always appreciate you getting these from me.
Thank you, Ron.
Leon, these are for you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. Next up, Rodney Harrison. Mr. Harrison, do you live in Cleveland or Liberty?
Sir, I'm in Cleveland.
Cleveland.
Born, living in Detroit.
Yes, sir. I just, you didn't have it on your, your participation form, so I had to have the, you have the address, six oh four Shell?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, now.
Good morning. Thanks. Good morning. Appreciate the time and your patience. My name is Rodney Harrison. I am in fifty-sixth year, Liberty County residence. I was born in Cleveland, Texas, nineteen sixty-six. I am in my in my combined years, I'm a thirty-five-year-husband, father, death consultant. I've been trained to lead by the best company in the world, the US Army, with the values of God, family, and country. Since returning here, twenty-seven years ago, I bought a home, and at home, my wife and I paid, paid the mortgage on a regular basis without no problem. But when some years, my wife had a stroke in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, combined COVID, diabetes, stroke, which therefore left me in a challenging position with, with fifty percent income deficit, because of, because of her inability to work, and to choose between paying bills and buying medicine for her. There was no choice, and leadership and love, there's no choice. You pay the bill to keep your spouse alive. I done that. In the meantime, I reached out as well to get some help with Liberty County Veterans Association, and everybody has some help, but over time, the, the, the climate has changed. When I asked them as well for help, I do not get, I was denied. I'm asked for a clerk, and cannot get the top of the rules. I cannot get the top of the rules. When I had to speak to me to supervise, I cannot get immediate supervision. I cannot get anyone to get me any help. Two days ago, I came to talk to Mr. Jay Knight about my problems, and then timeline, I got no response. In an urgent financial manner, I got no response in ten days, and more than three months, I've been asked, but consistently, consistently, and I got none. There's lack of transparency, lack of honesty, lack of discipline, and lack of rules. I speak on behalf of other veterans who, who cannot speak here. As Bron Blake spoke, there was thirty-five guys killing themselves every day, times three hundred and sixty-five days, twelve thousand seven hundred veterans killing themselves. But we don't act now, don't act aggressively now, and what happened? I've been working with this with, I understand why so many guys are throwing their hands every day and despair and discuss. We can't even get the basic plan, that who, what, when, where, how, we can't get no rules, you know, not, I think it's a travesty that we must go through this matter. We've given our life, just given our life, and told us that we would give one tear to you, but we have not got one tear back. We're short by eight and nine missing. We like this organization to bring you a convo to the accident, make sure they give a one-ten, they promised us. I said, thank you so much for your time. If, if you need more advice, I'd love to come back and put on the journal, or have one detail. I kind of rushed, because I only have three minutes. I'm gonna be sure I got the things there. But again, thank you so much, Mr. Knight. It'll be awesome. I appreciate you.
Mr. Tommy Touche?
Yes, sir.
We're ready.
My name is Tommy Touche. I am currently the judge advocate at post fifty-six twenty-one at the VFW Illinois Pickett here in Liberty. I not only represent that post, but the veterans of foreign wars in general. Last year, we had a great legislative battle won by passing the PAC Act. There is much, much more that needs to be done. We need to start thinking proactively instead of reactively. I wear this bracelet here for the Veterans Crisis Line. If I have a veteran in need that might become homeless, I'm instructed to call, tell them to call the Crisis Line. They'll call, and they'll say, I'm about to be homeless. The response is, call me back when you're homeless. That is a travesty. We need to start thinking proactive and not reactive. The VFW is now the world's largest veteran organization in the world. That's, that's a statement in the world. We do, we, no one does more for veterans than the VFW. We, we hold that slogan near and dear to our heart. When I have a veteran in need, this gentleman is not a member of my, my VFW, but we support veterans, whether they're labors or not. So I'm asking just for two things, transparency and accountability of our duly elected officials and everything else. So we can take care of our veterans. Thirty-five a day is the new number. It's not twenty-two anymore. It's way too many. One is too many. One is too many. So that's all I'm asking for today is accountability and transparency. And let's see if we can help at least one veteran. That's better than none, with that term I yield. Thank you. This is my first time in this, in Chambers. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming.
General, if I could interrupt just a minute?
Yes, sir.
Like everybody, remember Chief Neyland, prior Chief Neyland, he's in Memorial Hospital. He may have to have abdomen surgery. So if y'all remember, did you hear?
Yes, sir. Thank you. All righty, moving right along. Declare conflicts of interest. If you want to have anything on the agenda today that you consider treated as a conflict, and so please speak up. Hearing none, move on to the consent agenda. Dwayne, we have any add-ons today?
Yes. We're wanting to use post office for a hundred and four thousand.
Somebody got a picture box?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the Senate amendment.
Dwayne?
Yeah.
Would you educate me here on on item three down? We'll go to ways here, it says, uh, Roden Bridge, Roden Bridge, want number one, recognize, recognize physically your twenty-twenty-two pipeline damage expenditures on books and recognize revenue.
Oh, there is an entry I have to make on the books for last year's financial statements. There was money that was spent out of deferred revenue, pipeline damages.
Okay. The reason I ask you that is because I'm about to have a pipeline come right through the middle of the precinct, and I need to, I need to, I guess, know what needs to take place under those circumstances, because I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be dealing with these guys, and that's why I'm asking the question.
The money's put into the deferred revenue, it's a liability account, and the invoices, the expenses are paid during the year, but that year, I've got to book it into the precinct budget for financial spending purposes, and that's what they want to hear, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We have a motion by Bruce, second by Greg, to approve the consent agenda with the add-on, as noted. All in favor, say aye. Likewise, nays, that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Regular agenda. Uh, the first one up is an information item. We, uh, Liberty County Mobility Study. We started on this roughly about a year and a half ago, I guess, uh, almost two years ago. The notion's been going on for way longer than that, but we finally found a way to join together with, uh, the three larger cities in the county, which Cleveland, Dayton, Liberty, and then the county itself, and apply for a grant through HAC. Uh, the grant was for half a million dollars. Our portion of the, the grant was fifty thousand dollars because we have ten percent matching expenditure. So Cleveland, Dayton, Liberty all potted up ten thousand apiece, and the county potted up twenty thousand. So we had our, our method. Uh, it took a little while, uh, but the HAC process, but we got it done, and, uh, Kimley Horn was hired to do this, uh, our transportation, uh, mobility study. And today, we have a completed study. And, uh, they're ready to present this to you. This information, I'm only, nothing to vote on, it's just something to listen to. And, uh, Mr. Michael Feeny with, uh, Kimley Horn is here, and Thomas Gray with HAC is here today. And, uh, they're ready to present this to you. Thomas, thank you for coming. Appreciate you.
So much. Um, and you basically said everything I was just about to say.
Okay.
Introduction studies. I think it was a few years ago when, uh, Douglas came to our previous director, Alan Clark, and said, we would like to, to talk about, uh, study looking at, um, transportation issues in Liberty County. Liberty County is growing quickly, and we need some help up here. So, uh, and you're right, the process was very slow. We actually started the study in, um, the fall of twenty twenty. We completed it late last year. Um, as you said, it's a county of the three cities, we're all, uh, participants. And, uh, Mike Feeny from Kimley Horn is here to, um, go over the recommendations for the study. Um, a whole copy of the study document is on our website. Um, so if you have any other questions, we'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Good. Thanks, Tom. Mike Feeny with Kimley Horn, and I'd like to thank the gentleman who took over this earlier. I would, I would say.
Mr. Feeny, will you give us just a second to pull up your?
Oh, sure.
Okay, file, will you please? Uh, yes, there it is. So Leon, you should be able to see it on your computer screen.
Yeah, I can hear.
Can you see the, um, presentation on your computer screen?
Yes, yes.
Okay, you're good.
All right, so, and I've got copies of this presentation, if you want to take a look at them. While I'm talking, I'll only be five, ten minutes before any questions. I don't need you all to stage. So we were hired by HAC in the county, do Liberty County Mobility Study. We got it done with a little interruption from the coronavirus, so I think, uh, a lot of good help from people around the county getting that done. So if you want to hit the next slide. Um, developed a vision for the study, and the vision was really just to improve, improve multiple transportation across the county, which will spur development and economic benefits. Um, and you can go to the next one. And the partners, as the judge said, were Liberty County, a lot of great representation from the judge, and your county engineer, Mr. Douglas. The cities of Liberty, Cleveland, Dayton, and representation from some folks from Texas, both from the Beaumont and Houston districts. So that was kind of a steering committee. As you can see on this map here, we put a little extra attention on the three big cities in your county, but we also looked at countywide connectivity. And then HAC's overarching goals, and go to the next one, are really focused on improving safety, maintaining your transportation assets in a state of good repair. Uh, moving goods and people efficiently, you can have competitiveness and not harm any natural resources out there. So we took those general goals and then made it a little more specific. For the efficiency, for example, you could look at key intersections, and there were dozens of intersections across the county and dozens of roadway corridors we focused on. And the report, which is on HAC's website, you can go get intimate detail on that. You'll be, you'll be a budding traffic engineer if you read that report. But it's a good text summary, so you don't have to be one. Um, we looked at safety, reducing pass rates, and this is, it took about fifteen months to get done with coronavirus interruptions. We had a lot of outreach, this bottom line down here, we had steering committee meetings in the county, the cities, and Texas. We met with them a good five, six times. Got some input, got some critique on the solutions. We had a stakeholder committee that was some of the businesses in the area, and some of the organizational groups in the area. Get some, some non-elected officials giving us input as well. We had a couple of public meetings throughout there. So who does the HAC? They do a good job of reaching out to, for Mr. and Mrs. John, you public, to big businesses, to small businesses, and elected officials. So we did that, and we came up with some countywide recommendations. We're going to go to the next one. So we identified some priority quarters. These, these may be a little hard to see, but these are things, these are highlighted in yellow, and I have this map I'll leave with you, Jay, so y'all could
Okay.
sit around your desk and argue over it, but it's broken down into higher, higher quality facilities, important connections, then local connections. There's a lot of lines on this thing, but your county's going to experience growth. You don't need to do a formal thorough plan and preserve that right away, and your commissioners will need to prioritize what they're going to do. And Thomas, do you want to say something about how you get a project in the HAC pipeline through the tip and all that?
We have a call for projects actually coming down. Um, this is, the HAC has two major planning documents, the RTP, the Replantation Plan for twenty forty-five. Um, right, they're doing some updates for it right now, and we're going to send it, present it to the public in March. And then we have the four-year plan called the TIP, the Transportation Improvement Program. Um, you can submit projects that go in the RTP. Once you're ready to build them, then you can elevate them to the TIP, which is the short-term plan. Um, and these are, these are approved by both, well, our, our Climate Policy Council, uh, which means monthly. And, uh, we actually, once we approve this, uh, the update to RTP, we will have a TIP call for projects. So keep your ground.
You know, the in layman's terms, because a lot of folks in here do understand what you're talking about, and there's a lot, they're probably listening that don't understand how long it takes to get a project through and why it takes so long. Now, I'll say this about this, uh, study. We've never had this before. County's never had this before, never. Kind of unique situation to be in. Why we didn't, I have no idea, but we've got one now. So then what happens next is we have the opportunity to review this with each entity, you know, the cities, even the individuals. And if you have a particular project you would like to see more focus on, you got to tell somebody. We have public meetings for a reason, and during this process, we had plenty of public meetings. Some, we had a lot of input, some, a couple of them, nobody showed up, except Cleveland Fire Department. You know, and it's this kind of thing, it's our golden opportunity to get something done, so let's do it. You know, I'm, I'm not getting any younger. Nobody in this room is getting any younger. But we have problems in transportation in this county that we can focus on. We have a method now to focus on these. But it takes time. As everybody knows, we've had a, a project with a railroad. And I was told, walking in the door on that project, so was Commissioner Wilson. He was with me when we walked in the door. They said it's ten years. Leon, you remember that? We both looked at each other, we both looked at each other like a couple of buzzards on, on a power line. You know, it was like, in the world are you talking about? They're not kidding. You deal with railroads a little slower. You deal with HACs a little faster. Matter of fact, it's about half speed, or half, half as much faster than the railroad. But you have to go through the procedures, and the procedures in this case that we're aiming at, Thomas, is to prioritize.
Right.
That's it.
Right. The TIP, we call for projects, there's, we have a pot of money, um, but it is never, it's never nearly enough
Right.
money to match the, um, the amount of requests we get for projects from, we represent an eight-county region. So when you have a project, it has to be competitive with the road project in Fort Bend County, the transit project in Galveston, the, um, the new bridge in Montgomery County.
Right.
And so we have a prioritization process, and then we, HAC staff will go through and, um, and kind of rank or score these projects, um, in terms of what, what, what has, what has the most, um, I guess, what, let me see, I can explain, um, which projects are ready to go, which projects are most shovel-ready, which projects are going to provide the most benefit in terms of, um, reduce congestion, less, uh, less emissions, better quality.
Prove safety.
Prove safety, thank you. Um, just a variety of things. And just by having your projects listed in a plan is a big plus, because you already set that, you already know what you want. What US Commissioners' work can do now is go back and obviously work with the cities, go back and say, okay, we know we're not going to have enough money, or HAC is not going to have money to fund all of these projects, but if we can prioritize and put in applications for our next, uh, call for projects for the transportation improvement plan, and submit them there, and we will rank them and see what happens. You know, like I said, it's very competitive.
It's competitive. The, uh, the thing that we looked at, uh, even in the, for instance, the railroad overpass project, which was a lengthy one, because we've basically been on it for about six and a half, seven years now. And it, uh, it's fifty-seven million dollars. I mean, that was forty-two from HAC. I think another twelve million was tacked on by the state with the, uh, another committee. So when you look at that, it was a win-win, you know, but again, it's not enough money to cover everything. I mean, you got rail that, that rides underneath the project, you know, so you still have to coordinate those efforts through all the stakeholders. The, uh, the main gist of any project, and we're in competition, that's true, we're more of, our, our focus has been on regionalism. With our economic development, uh, EDCs of the county and the county itself, we're in competition with everybody else, and we're out to win, okay? Now, thirteen counties, that's a pretty good little bit to chat, go out and have a slugfest with. And the other side is, the one of the biggest ones, it's a real hungry county, it's called Harris County, and they have projects everywhere that they need done. Well, I think we're finally getting our fair share, and I appreciate this, and I appreciate the efforts that y'all have, y'all have, uh, focused on to get this to us, where we can actually put it up on the map. That's pretty handy to have that.
That right there, I'll leave it with you, and I even got it laminated so you can spill your coffee on it.
No, I'm, or those little markers you use, you know, and, you know, the dry erase, can I use that on there? Because a lot of those are going to be some that when folks come in and ask questions about it, you know.
I'll shoot you a file so you can plot it out, too.
Okay.
People mark up to the arts and say.
I can.
If you send it to me, I can print big copies and not.
I can anticipate Leon will come over to my office, he's going to bring a big red marker and start drawing on there which one he wants first, and that's, that's what we do. You have to put it on there and prioritize the shovel-ready side of it. Boy, that's, that's, that is the most hard thing to, to prove up, because it deals with land acquisition.
Right, right.
Engineering studies. I mean, it's environmental all the way down, and then the way these are awarded, too, that was, I'm glad you mentioned that, because traffic safety and emissions, anybody ever thought about that? We got the train crossing the track over in Dayton, everybody's parked all the way down the Liberty Bridge over here, the Trinity Bridge, River Bridge, because they can't get through Dayton, but all those cars are running because it's a hundred and five degrees in middle of July, and there's emissions. There it is. You prove your point, that's what. You prove up the project and you get it to move forward. And I thank you, I applaud y'all for doing this. I thank you so much.
I'd like to reiterate a couple of things. If you hear of a meeting, the RTP is coming back out, the Regional Transportation Plan, go to that meeting and make your voice heard. Tell the staffer, make sure you see they're there to listen to you, they work for you. Do it, because what Jay's saying is, there's a pie of funding. And if you don't go get your piece, Harris County will, um, it's sunning right up. And I've seen how the outline counties prepared it when I came to Texas twenty-seven years ago, getting more involved, so that it's a more equitable distribution of the, the funds across the region.
It is.
But we can help you prioritize it. Natalie Boozma with our office, the roadway engineer, and she can help you see if it's, uh, you pass some of the hurdles in terms of right-of-way and stuff.
You bet.
We can help you prioritize it. And there is a big pot of, uh, puddle, there's an ocean of safety fund coming out, too, so that's something else we look at.
We've seen that, too, yeah.
Um, and are you guys doing a regional application for that, or?
I'm not sure. I have to ask, right? Yeah. I know that we recently received the Safe Streets for All Grant that the, um, the city and the city of Houston, some member, this outline committee is all pulled in together, but you are right, there's more.
We can help you pull some details of the, 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 for, because we looked at a mission, we looked at travel time savings, reduce crash costs, things like that, so it's, it's all good, but you gotta get out there. You gotta get out there, figure out what you want and ask for it. So.
That's it.
But you have a starting map now. We literally have a map.
We got a map. We had the process outlined. Let's roll up our sleeves, hold hands and go get, go get the big, uh. Brass ring. That's it.
All right. Another thing in there and I won't bore you with it, but we suggested some policy regulations for. Plastics, metals, metal supply requirements, things like that. And hopefully I'll get some more standardization to help you present some headaches in the future. Maybe you had a development or two that could have started better. So that'd be something good too. Some standardization of some, the, the design and construction.
Right.
Well, so that's the, but one of the more interesting things to hear, I think one thing to point out here, this connection. Between I-ten and US ninety east-west is a good idea. Because I know Chambers County is prime, I turn it gets backed up. And they can't do another east-west because of the Anoac National Rottolife Refuge. So. And I hear a couple of complaints about ninety. So that new one in the middle would, would, uh, would fit the bill.
Yeah, it's not, I wouldn't call that a pie in the sky dream, uh, but the other side of it is, we don't think about it now.
Right.
We're, we're really not doing a very good service to the folks in the future.
Yeah. And doing a formal thorough plan too, to let the developers know if they do something, they're going to have to allow some access through it.
Yes.
Cause that's purpose of the third plan to put the developers on notice. One of them. We looked at intersection and corridor improvements. I'll show you a couple of examples, but we went through dozens and dozens of intersections, came up with some near term fixes. The abandoned retardant signal, the turn lane, some long-term fixes, some roadway widening. So in that report. And it's on the HGC website that you'll see at the end, uh, you can go study every intersection and corridor to your heart's content. Um, one of the things we were asked to do, this is another little bigger picture one. We looked at a Dayton bypass as shown here. Dayton, they, uh, Dayton has asked for this for a while to come off of ninety, rate separated, go out, leave the town and get those trucks. From going through, through ninety downtown. That's great. And then we also wish to feedback from the county, look at continuing that. Grade separating over nineteen sixteen, the railroad tie back into three twenty one. That provides you a north-south route that won't get blocked with the trains sitting there. Or when the underpass floods, God forbid it rains with the trains there. So you can't get from the north side to the south side. So that's something fully supported by nature. We got an alignment in there that would. Would work. So that's another example of a project you could put on, put through the, the HGC process, get into the arts compete, and then it goes to the tip. Yeah. The art compete is your Christmas wishlist. That's nice. And then the tip is what you have the budget to buy at Christmas. So.
Right.
Uh, but they do call the projects every year. So.
Yeah. You know, you mentioned the twenty forty five plan. And that, you know, yeah, I think believe it or not, that's, it's coming. It, uh, it, it won't be long either. But the, uh, the other side is it's the four-year get in the, in the groove.
Right.
Plan as well. So again, you just had to, uh, prove up your priorities, prove up the justification and then go after the funding. That's it.
So this is just an example of intersection project. This is up in Cleveland where you've got this old cold spring crossing. Near term, we said, put some signals in there to make it operate better. It's really congested down during peak periods. Long-term, you need to widen that bridge to four lane. You've got enough development going on, especially up here on this west side that. You're going to need four lanes to carry that. Um, for the south, I had a couple of east-west bridges. They didn't. Think that way. So I know that, yeah, down near Springwoods.
Right.
Um, so this would solve. Last to predict when we finally do that. And then we've got all kinds of data in there. Things basically congestion, mixture congestion, reduction of crashes. Boom. So we can go to the next one. This is an example of some of the roadway segments. This is. One oh five coming west out of, out of Cleveland here. You can see the existing and proposed cross-section. We have some data for why we suggested widening it. Um, and, and it'll prove it up in terms of efficiency, delay and safety. So those are the kind of improvements. We looked at some active transportation. Good next one, sir. Um, and really including sidewalks in a lot of these corridors, sharing these paths where we can. There's opportunities for your, your three cities to apply for livable centers grants should they choose. That's really a municipal thing, but it's still funny to look at how to. Spruce up a main street or attract a few more businesses or fix some safety problems. Um, but that's, again, HGC does an annual call for projects for livable centers. So Dayton, Liberty, Cleveland could do one of those projects. Um, Courtney would text out on future projects. And then you've got some other work the county's done too. Uh, the Dade Farm Plan, Liberty County Community Plan, and you could, you could follow on. This just is an upgrade of your transportation system, our study here. Uh, so transit recommendations, we heard a few calls for transit. The Brazos Transit District really needs to go work with HGC to get a. A Dade specific transit study, for example, some parking rides. There's a gentleman at HGC who's doing that for the city of Pearland right now. So some of your cities can do that. And I think he's.
He's, he's going to be the Dade project.
Okay. So that's the kind of thing for Dade, whether it's a cell service within Dade or connection to the west. And then we did an evaluation. So of course it's covered by this, but it's about a three point two benefit to cost ratio. For every dollar you spend, you're going to get over three dollars in benefits back to the direct travel in public in terms of. Reduced travel time, reduced emissions, fewer crashes. So that's another thing we put in there too. Because that's what you go to score projects in the tip.
Have to show a constant.
So that's done for you. So. Then, certainly, one. Any questions? This is the website, engage.h-gac.com. Just go search for Liberty County.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, you'll have all kinds of presentations in there, PDFs of all these reports. Um, if you want to know a trafficked and bear transportation planner, you, you can get a little progress. Reports, reports well written. It's not too detailed. The high, it is detailed, but the hyper detailed stuff should be dependencies for the people that choose to. Or have some.
Really dig through the weeds. Yeah.
Yeah. And I want to give some credit to, to the judge and to your county engineer David. Um, they were instrumental in getting these cities involved with certain, certain parts of this and the development community. We talked to a couple of bigger developers as well. To, uh, um, figure out what they've got coming down the pike. So you had some good leadership at the county level. And with that, I'd be open to any other questions you guys have.
Anybody have any questions? Now's the time.
Your honor, we've talked with each commissioner, hard copy.
Yes, sir.
About this thing. And also I've been picking up today some memberships. What we've burned off from coffee. So anybody who needs an additional copy of my membership, I've got some of my.
And if you have any questions in the future, just give us a shout and we are now going to help you out. And then. We may, you know, I've got some samples of other projects I've done around the state where we prioritize stuff. So I could dig up a. Defense prioritization method.
Right, right.
Unless you, you're the arm wrestling champion, Jay, but you can, you can, you can beat all your other commissioners and.
Well, they have a notion in their precinct to make something happen. That's the arm wrestling that happens. Yeah.
Well, we, we, we can help. We had fun working on the study. I always liked working with HGC and it was, uh. You know, we gave the challenge of on the fly, doing stuff virtually in the beginning with the, with the Corona. We got back to normal doing stuff in person.
It's great.
It was a really fun study.
It's a fun study and a good project. And now we have it and we can use it. And the, um, well, the facts are there. You pick one out and all the, the documentation that we need to really get started is there. So thank you. Thank you so much.
And I may have some more to reach out to you about the safety funding from our offices.
Okay.
Because there's, it's a pile of money. You can find more piles of money to get a little piece of, why, why not?
Wayne loves that idea, I believe.
All right. Here's, uh, the board for you, Jay.
Yes, sir. I'm going to take that and hang it in the office.
Fun working with y'all.
Yes, fun working with you too.
And Jeff, I'd, I'd like to congratulate you on your new position with Board of Directors, HGC.
Yes, well, thank you. It, uh, that'll be a challenge. Yeah. You'll be seeing a lot more of me. No doubt. Yes. My new shirt. It's okay. New shirt at that. Thank you, Thomas. Thank you, mine. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All righty, moving right along. Uh. And that is a information item only. There's no. No vote to be taken on it. Number two, regular agenda.
Got it. Just go back to the regulars. There we go. Got it. Back on, back.
Yeah. Uh, from our fire markings, Mr. Huggett Mueller, chief, chief, you want to come up? Let's talk a little bit about. Firework sales for Texas Independence Day.
Uh, state mandates back, um, holidays, Texas Independence Day, um.
We'll make sure Leon's here.
So, uh, I still need you. Hi Leon. So state mandates back, we have to vote, commissioners have to vote on whether we sell fireworks on specific types of, uh. Uh, holidays and Texas Independence Day is coming up, March the second. So we need to vote on the board that pick or shine.
What day is, is it going to be?
March the second.
Only March second?
Well, that's when in Texas Independence.
No, I know, but what?
Week and forty to the day.
Okay.
So February, do you?
I don't know what the time period is.
Wait for me to turn it on.
Sounds right.
Sounds right.
Yeah. Through midnight, March second, correct?
Midnight, March second.
Okay. And we're still looking to get the old Jim Wilson rule.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I'm against the sticks and fins.
Yes, sir. Thank you. What's court's pleasure?
Making motion to approve excluding sticks and fins.
Yeah, a motion to approve, saving Greg to approve with those notations on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. The motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, number three, from Saris, our county treasurer. Consider and approve the Texas Association of Counties Health and Employee Benefits Pool. ACA reporting and tracking service for the twenty twenty-three agreement for new participant, HEBP member.
Yes, sir. Thank you. This is for, um. This is the agreement with TAC for the recording of ten ninety bucks. Um, so I think this might be our final. Final agreement that we need to go through to get it all switched over to TAC, currently planned sources. Um, providing that service for us. They've already done it for twenty twenty-two. So we can now check plan source off the list and. Move that service one over to.
Yeah.
Him?
Yes, sir.
What's your recommendations?
Um, I recommend that we move forward with this agreement.
I make the motion we approve.
There.
Motion Leon, saying Greg to approve, all in favor, say aye.
Right.
Likewise, nay. The motion carries. Thank you. Appreciate the.
Thank you.
And next one is, uh. Consider and approve recommendation of the county, Liberty County, WCID number five. Selection Review Committee to award by resolution. Freeze and Nichols Incorporated for engineering services for the city's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Texas Department of Agriculture, uh, Texas, uh, CDBG grant. Provide application preparation engineering services if awarded. I've got some questions on this because after reading the resolution, it's got Liberty County all over it.
Yes.
Not WCID five and not City of Liberty, but, uh. I'm, now I've got some serious legal questions about what. Our position's going to be. And also to include not just commissioners for itself, but all the way through payment. And, uh, if we had a chance to look over this.
No, we have not.
We have a.
Uh, I would ask that we table for the time being.
I'm going to have to concur. So until we can get some of the questions answered, a little bit of clarification on that. I would ask that we table this.
I make a motion if we table.
Check it.
Motion Leon, say Greg to table. All in favor, say aye.
Uh.
Likewise, nay. Motion carries. Likewise, for the next item. Consider approve recommendation of the Liberty County WCF five. Selection Review Committee to award Trailer and Associates Incorporated by resolution a contract. For administrative services pertaining to the application and implementation. If awarded of the county's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four Texas Department of Agriculture, Texas CDBG grant. And authorize the execution of a contract on behalf of WCID number five. Again, we have some legal questions on this one. When it's resolved, I would prefer and ask that you table this as well.
Make the motion we table.
Motion Leon, saying Greg to table, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. The motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number six, from Mr. Douglas. David, I'm holding up. Consider approve the issuing of a notice to proceed. To Schaumburg and Polk Engineering so that the project engineering can begin. Lee, do you have some questions on this?
Uh, yeah, David and I discussed it prior to the meeting and I'm going to recommend a little bit of change to the language.
Yeah.
Um. Let me get this last voted.
Okay.
Um, what, what I'm going to recommend is that we say, uh, we approve the issuance of a notice. To proceed to Schaumburg and Polk Incorporated Engineering Company to commence the Ames ARPA funded wastewater project. So that we're identifying the project and the company, you know, in the, in the motion.
Yes. Matthew, you okay with that language or?
Oh, yeah. I'm, I think that would clean it up. Yes.
In a nutshell, I just put, Leon, can you see?
I'm sorry?
Can you see me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um. This is, uh, this is for the ARPA funding out of Mr. Kobowski's first time on Ames. They've been awarded some funding over there to do a wastewater treatment project. Uh, not to exceed ten million dollars. And, uh, we have gone through the solicitation and selection process. On engineer and they selected Schaumburg and Polk SBI. And now it's time for us to issue a notice to proceed. So the Schaumburg and Polk can begin to do the field studies and design work for this project. So what we're asking for your permission to do is for my, is to issue a notice personally to SBI.
Matthew?
Yes, sir.
Can we even vote on this based on the fact that we've changed the verbiage in this outline item?
I'm not so worried about changing the verbiage. If we change the verbiage, it's good. Uh, I'm nervous that we, it doesn't identify the project in the, in the, uh, agenda item itself.
Correct.
I'm, I'm, I think that six and seven, I think it's just six and seven.
Yep.
Yeah, need, need to come back into roots or maybe special needs.
Now, if, if you look at the transmittal documents that came over with it, that are included in the packet. Now, it's not stated this way. Now, I'm going to notice. But the transmittal information does identify this. As Schaumburg and Polk Engineering also that it is the Ames wastewater project.
Matthew?
No, the, the, the issue is still there. It's the agenda itself is the important.
Yeah.
Point and not the attached documents.
Well, we're going into the same, we're going to run into the same situation.
So.
On seven.
That's correct.
So I suggest we just, uh, go ahead and table six and seven and I'll bring you back with, uh, with more information on posting.
I make the motion we table six, item six and item seven.
Okay, hang on. I can't. Okay.
You second?
Yes, second.
Is that for both of those, Bruce?
Yes, for item six and seven.
Okay.
Clarification of which one is.
Okay. All right. We have motion to table item six and seven for the same reason. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nay. The motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eight, David, still got you up here.
It is identified.
Yes, there you go. Consider approve authorization to add this project. To the existing grant management agreement with whole freshwater supply district and ARPA grant funds. And to solicit for engineering services.
The court is already acting to the warning. Of freshwater supply distance of two billion dollars. For improvements in their water system. And so now, uh, based on that action by Cruz, which court, it's time for us to have the authority to go back to Grant Works. Because Grant Works has handled the Ames project and the Harvard project. And, uh, they'll add this into their administrative duties. And, uh, then it's also time to go out and solicit for an engineer. And, uh, the freshwater supply district will be highly involved in that. It's, it's their selection process for the engineer. We have to go through the motions for it and, uh, and the purchasing department will set up to handle this. And so we just need your authorization to go get it done.
Take a motion to.
Do you think they're over budgeted?
Yes, I've talked to the director out there. They're changing the gallons per minute from, uh, pump to.
They were changing the gallons per minute from, uh, pump to a lower specification, getting the price down. And if they're going to offset over the million dollars, they have the money.
Do we want to run this by Grant Works before we go out for engineering now? And then the ones that brought a charge in here and then they put in the cost analysis, I think, can be full of. So do you think?
Not an engineering.
Okay.
No, y'all are talking over here. You need it in the mic over here, Leon. So please, please come forward.
Yeah, I think that, uh, there needs to be some discussion with Grant Works.
Yeah.
About any misfortune. Just like we did with Harden and just like we did with them.
Why don't we prefer to table this?
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. So what would your motion be? Or any one's motion be?
Make a motion to table.
We're gonna table it. Leon, we don't have enough information yet. Motion from Bruce and second Greg table. All in favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. We have a full table next one. Uh, number nine, permits and inspections. Mr. Douglas, consider approve court action the following. Court approved draws two and four and G L O required contract date. Change required. Uh, what is?
Yeah, these are draws that are coming through on the housing program. This is in your pursuit. And, uh, we've already approved previously draw two, three and four. And G L O had to do a detection on the documents. And so now Grant Works have resubmitted and is asking for reapproval of those. Draw number five and draw number six are new draws. And so we need to authorize those today. Uh, the documents enclosed in the information, Mr. Arthur, this is one of the documents that you countersign with the county judge. And so what we're gonna ask you to do is approve these today. It's signed off and then we can submit them to G L O and get some money coming back to the county.
We approve. Second.
Motion from Greg to Bruce, second to Bruce. Is there any further discussion? Matthew, any problems with this? No. Dwayne, you don't mind writing a check on this?
Can I verify, um, the board is reapproving draws two through four? And new and draws five through six are new approvals.
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay.
Yes. Okay. No further discussion? All right, so motion Greg, second Bruce, all in favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion does carry.
Oh.
Don't have to revisit that. And yet, David, we got one more. Number ten, consider approve final plat print Encino Estates, section six. Okay?
Mr. Wilson, this one is your Encino Estates. This is subdivision, uh, out of ten oh eight, just north of Tennessee. Uh, section six, uh, it has been reviewed by L J A engineers. They have approved it, names you plan, they've approved the, uh, the final plat. Um, everything is ready to be signed off on on that. Yes, memory search in section six is a hundred and twenty additional lots. Most of these lots are uh, a little over half an acre, six tenths of an acre.
Three point six nine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, uh, so nice subdivision has gone very well out there. Um, most of the housing in this area now is running four hundred thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there are even a couple of homes out there that have recently gone up that, uh, that are in the five thousand square foot range. So you're looking at a name. But, uh, we're gonna ask you today to approve the final plat for Encino Estates. And Mr. Wilson, we will drop this off at your office today for your signature. If you would have, uh, uh, David give her the call, we'll come pick it up once she gets signed.
Okay.
All right.
Motion Leon second from Bruce and Greg. I'll give it to, to, to Greg this time. Yeah, all in favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Oh. Hang around, guys. We gotta sign a plat.
Yeah, gotcha. Number eleven is Mr. Gott, our county auditor, consider approve pay request from Grant Works pertaining to the C D B G grant twenty zero six six zero one three C zero nine five housing by as follows. Um, that's the only time I'm gonna read all that part because the rest of them are about the same. But anyway, this is file number, uh, lib code zero four four. Uh, the price forty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-six, forty-two cents plus estimated closing cost five thousand. Total not to exceed forty-eight thousand, hundred and seventy-six dollars, forty-two cents. And these are the buyouts we've been participating in the last several months.
That'd be a total of forty-one of those, Judge.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion Bruce, second Greg, all in favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion does carry. Thank you, gentlemen. Number twelve, uh, same thing, but file lib code zero zero one. Uh, purchase price nineteen thousand, seven hundred. Closing cost five thousand, total not to exceed twenty-four thousand, seven hundred. And a homeowner relocation incentive for nine thou, um, four thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars will be paid at closing.
Motion to approve.
Motion Bruce, second from Greg, all in favor? Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number thirteen, uh, file number lib code dash zero one three. Purchase price eighty thousand. Closing cost five thousand, total will not, uh, exceed eighty-five thousand.
Make the motion we approve.
Second.
Motion Leon, second Bruce, all in favor say aye. Likewise, nays. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number fourteen is Mr. C. And, uh, there's Mr. C. Uh, consider approve solicitation of bids for a used tractor and side boom mower for precinct one.
Oh, I'd like to, uh, take that off the, take no action. Make a motion, take no action, let's do that, go through.
Okay. You got a motion. Saving Leon to take no action on this item. All in favor say aye. Likewise, nays. That motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number fifteen for Mr. C. Consider approve the purchase of a twenty-five in-car printers with software and licensing from Tyler Technologies in the amount of fifty-one thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars through Sourcewell Contract. Number zero nine, zero three, two zero dash T T I for the sheriff's office. Harold?
Uh, yeah, that pretty well sums it up. This is for the cars they bought last year, uh, the twenty-five. This'll help them get on the road, hooked in with Tyler.
I spoke with the sheriff's office this morning about this. They're asking that it be tabled for the time being. There's a couple of, uh, issues that may just need ironed out before from this fact. That's all.
Okay.
Make a motion to table.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg to table. All in favor say aye. Likewise, nays. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number sixteen, Mr. C. Consider approve exercising the first of two renewal options for bid number twenty-two oh four body armor to extend contract with cop stop through February seventh of twenty twenty-four. Mr. C?
Yeah, this was bid out last year and it, uh, allowed, uh, an extension at the same terms and commit, uh, unless they change their mind, sheriff's office has asked that that be extended another year.
Uh. Captain or chief, excuse me, it's no longer captain, it's chief now. Well, you got it.
Yeah. We might lock that in because the price is gonna go up if you don't, uh, stay on it. So, yeah.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion from Bruce, second from Greg to approve. All in favor say aye. Likewise, nays. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number seventeen, Mr. C. Well, we just keep you busy today, buddy. Consider approve the proposal from Byron McDowell. On construction incorporated in the amount of thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars for the replacement of the awning for adult probation. And I'm gonna ask that y'all consider this strongly today. Simply because if we don't do something, it's gonna fall on somebody else.
I thought David, yeah, David, you know, can I explain just what's going on with building in this oning?
Next one's the it's held over by, I guess, wild tables attached to the building. They look secure, but all your wood facade and all that's rotten.
Yeah.
And it's liable to fall back down unless companies coming in. My right down there will strip it all, pressure wars. Do if they need to do any plumbing issues like that. And I think it's almost signs going to come into the facade without any drainage, stuff like that for it.
Mm-hmm.
So it's definitely a safety concern.
Yes.
Make a motion to approve.
Yeah, motion Bruce, second Greg. Dwayne, we have funds. Dwayne says we have the funds, Leon, so we'll do it there. Any further discussion? Call for a vote. What's court's pleasure? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number eighteen for Mr. Poston, Ms. McCarty. Consider and approve memorandum of understanding permitting Liberty County's constable precinct one to adopt all policies and procedures of the Liberty County Sheriff's Office. You gonna explain this a little bit to us?
Sure. It's really, i- i- if I think in, uh, uh, it's not entirely necessary that the commissioners board adopt this or passes resolution. But this is a good way to make it, uh, open and obvious that, uh, precinct one is adopting the sheriff's office policy. That's within her, uh, discretion. So, uh, violate, but like I said, the transparency, uh, she's having to, I would ask that, uh, y'all approve.
Yes. Any discussion? Entertained motion?
Make motion we approve.
Second.
Motion Leon, second from Bruce. All in favor say aye. Likewise, nays. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Number nineteen for Mr. Poston, consider approve resolution approving private road numbering policy for private roads in the unincorporated part of the county for the purposes of easy identification by emergency services. This is a pickle. You wanna run this down to us and?
Sure, I, ultimately, I'm gonna ask that this be tabled for next court. But this is a good, I guess, information item for a moment. Uh, we're running into, I understand increasingly more, um, problems where, uh, it's difficult for emergency responders to get to certain locations and they don't know what they have hurt. Uh, because more and more folks as they're moving into county are, uh, kind of stacking on driveways and turning driveways more or less into private roads. So this policy doesn't address, uh, the, uh, what, what, this policy is not converting any of those private roads into public roads or, uh, admitting any of those private roads or driveways in county maintenance. That's not the point. The point is simply to assign uh, county road or private road numbers to those roads. So that C A D and, and, uh, nine one one can find these services. That's it. But there, there are a couple of minor issues. Again, I, I assume you table. You'll hear more about it if you come see.
Yeah, and I understand this. I served on the nine one one committee at H G A City. And we've been working on this. Simply one thing that happened several years back. Everybody has a cell phone, right? Yeah, I think everybody does. Heck, even my grandson has a cell phone, you know? The cool thing is there's a sales tax that you pay for the use of your cell phone. And even when you buy a cell phone, you pay a sales tax. And back a few years ago, the state of Texas was getting called the funds for this. Well, H G A C saw the opportunity that we weren't getting served appropriately or enough fair share, so to speak, in our area because of these measures like this. We upgraded the nine one one service. We, we did pass this through, uh, H G A C. H G A C receives that sales tax money now. And then we started upgrading services within the H G A C reas, region to where with the new nine one one equipment, it would actually be able to ping your phone where you are. Instead of when you pick up a telephone, if you have a seven one three prefix, which I do, and I would call nine one one and go to Houston. That makes sense. That asks me, what's your emergency? I tell them, it's, well, you don't live here. Yeah, well, no. I'm, I'm, uh, such as such, you know, farm road, such as such, and county road intersection. And I'm, well, that's Liberty County. Yeah, it sure is. So as identification purposes, we went back and, and resolved the issue with H G A C. Now we had to further resolve the issue in the county for identification of these private roads. And there are a lot of private roads in the county that have already been named, but the ones that are coming, and folks, they are coming. We need to get, uh, back on top of the ball so we can use this. The sheriff, when he gets a phone call from someone that says I'm having an emergency, they know right where to go because you're gonna have a really nice dispatch center that can actually locate where the person is. So that's what we're asking for. If you need to table this to get more information. I believe we're miles ahead from where we were eight years ago or four years ago.
Absolutely. Judge, can I comment on this?
Yes, sir.
Um, one of the things we're running into, and I'm already running out of business with Mr. Arthur and, and with Mr. Wilson, the people. We encounter a situation where hypothetically, Ms. Jones owns five acres over here in Hough somewhere. And she's got her house on it and she's got her strong. And now she decides she's going to put a mother home for her daughter. There's now three structures on that piece of property. The way this, the new numbering system is set up, her driveway has to become a private road where she can't get a mailing address.
Yeah.
And so that's what's driving all of this. And, and we're gonna end up with driveways all over Liberty County. They're gonna be private roads. And we're trying to figure out how to centralize this system. Uh, because we don't have the manpower to send people out and ride and look for a driveway somewhere. And then trying to determine what an appropriate number is. Now, in the proposed numbering system we're looking at, we started and Mr. Hudson and I kind of threw this around. We started with the numbering system of seven thousand because we have no roads anywhere in Liberty County that are in seven thousand. So we would return that seven thousand dollar for private road.
But it don't solve the problem. There's a number of private roads you're gonna ask.
We're gonna have much. Well, I know overall, twenty-eight thirty, I'd have several of those roads, one eighty-two, one eighty-two A, one eighty-two B. But emergency services knows where one eighty-two is, so they can just, they know it has to be a driveway close to that.
Yeah.
Is that about what y'all are trying to do or?
Where, yeah, and there are basically forms that are generated by H, uh, by C A D. And I've had a motion more details out in, uh, in the party meetings. But, uh, there are forms that are generated over the C A D that have wanted to be later to you. Uh, there is a map that's attached to it. Yeah, we will be able to identify where private road seven thousand. And then there're gonna be issues on it. You're gonna have to decide if you're gonna provide a private road number for this driveway. Uh, right now, sometimes we build private road signs, sometimes we don't. It's kind of up to the commissioner.
Yeah, we, we, we do that for the single.
If, um, the, the, the problem with, okay, if you got a private drive and one house back there, then it's on like two ten. Okay, twenty-one hundred, two ten. But if they put another house back there.
Three, third house.
Okay, but the same house with
third house can still be two ten as an acre. But the fourth, okay, the third or the fourth, that can become a private, private. So that's it in a nutshell. Uh, land party called me yesterday. She and I played. And, uh, so I'll get to say. And we'll see if you, while y'all stay back in the night. And, uh, and I'll get back with Mr. Poston to bring this back to you.
Make a motion to table.
Your honor, can I make one comment to go along with this?
Please.
Um, you're talking about the C A D, which is great, but at this point in time, the official county road maps in the county clerk's office, which are our official, we're, we're, are almost a decade old. Um, there's a lot of roads that are on there. And if we're going to continue to add on anything, we need a program to update the mapping. Um, and, and I said. um, in, in my system. And that, that means there's a map and you guys approve it. So if we're going to do this, I'm going to incorporate some way to update the road maps for the official public records with the commissioner's court approval. So I'm asking for that.
There's probably another way. I didn't have, not to get too far on this, but the county roadmap, uh, second. But I said, I didn't realize this. I did that myself two months later. When, uh, was the one time the, the legislature only let us see county roadmap. It's that one time in, I think, oh, six, oh, seven. And, uh, they have not, uh, surrendered a license to do it. Not saying that we don't need some sort of other way of, of some tracking or other list. The county clerk's office, I just said, the county roadmap.
We need something because we get public information requests for these roads and official county road status all to time. So we need to update those maps or, or address this issue of, of mapping the roads for the public. That's just why I said.
So do you know the map? What's wrong with it? You didn't answer.
Yes, I think, but like I said, they're not up to date. So they're very, very old and there's a lot of stuff that's just not on there. And, uh, but a lot of this, you know, that's what the public is seeing as far as what's available in roads in our county. So we need, we need something better. I'm just throwing that out.
Okay. All right. So consideration now is to table this, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I need a motion to second table.
Got a motion.
Got a motion from Bruce. Okay. Saying Leon, all the favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays that motion carries. Okay. We do have an executive session item, uh, from Mr. Poston, consider approve ratification of action by Liberty County Election Commission, which may include termination suspension without pay. Our suspension would pay a Clint Bush from the position of Liberty County Election Administrator. This time I would ask the court to, uh, give me a motion to second to go into executive session and we'll vote.
Make a motion going to executive session.
Bruce, uh, made the motion, Greg made the second.
And is that under 501, although 71 and personal matters, 501 is a four?
Yes, sir. 501071 and 501074. And in, all the favor say aye.
Aye.
Likewise, nays it's now 10:19. A and we are in the executive session.
Okay, you're good.
Okay. All right, it's, uh, 10:50. Yep, 10:50 a.m. We're out of the executive session, back in regular session. Uh, our question is consider to approve ratification of action by Liberty County Election Commission, which may include termination suspension without pay. Our suspension would pay a Clint Bush from the position of Liberty County Election Administrator. Uh, is there any further discussion?
Can I ask one thing? Now, this was put into the agenda as 9.1. Um, do we want to make this a regular agenda item or do we want to vote for it under the executive session section?
As long as it's clear that it came out of the executive session.
Okay. All right. I think I'm going to make it a numbered item on the agenda.
That's fine.
Okay. But yes, it will, it will have all that information. Okay.
Good.
Okay. Just verifying.
Make a motion to accept Liberty County's election commission recommendation of keeping that suspended with pay for another 60 days.
Okay, we got a motion from Bruce, need a second.
Second.
Second from Leon, all the favor say aye. Likewise, nays that motion carries. Thank you, Jim. Need a?
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion from Bruce. Got both, got a second from Greg, all the favor say aye.